Yell planning commission meeting to order Monday, April seventeenth, twenty seventy three. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner John Braver, Commissioner Richard Lomstale.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carlets Perez.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bob Howard. Commissioner Jerry Fuchek.
There.
Commissioner John Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Anne Warman.
You have a call. Proceed with the meetings. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So has everyone had an opportunity to read last week's or last month's minutes?
Yes. Yes.
Would I have a motion for the minutes?
I'd move that we approve the minutes. I second it.
Which has been approved and seconded. All right, then we'll go on to. Item five, agenda item five, city staff communications and department update. Are there any staff communications?
I have a quick one. So the little slip of paper I put in front of you. On our proposed dates for a joint meeting of the Thurston County and Yellum City Funding Commission. And the purpose of that joint meeting is we're working on updating the Thurston County joint plan, comprehensive plan. This is the plan that is for Yellum's urban growth areas. So those areas that are still in the county, but which we will, we intend to annex at some point in the future. So we have a joint plan for that area. And we have a draft that's basically done. We're working on some mapping stuff, but we're required to hold. Joint hearings on this because it has to be approved by both Yellum City Council ultimately and the Thurston County Board of Commissioners. So it's kind of complicated in terms of getting everybody's dates down when everybody could be available. So I just wanted to put those in front of you to look at for now, to give you an idea of the dates that we're proposing. And then the county is going to send out an email. They call it a doodle poll. I don't know if you've ever used it, but it's a. It'll send out all the potential dates that people can meet and you can check the boxes that you are available. And then they can use that to see how schedules line up or they don't line up. So. You'll be getting an email of that effect pretty soon.
Good.
And just wanted to give you a heads up for that because this is a kind of a coordination challenge. And I think that we probably will be proposing to meet at the Thurston County Building where they have big long tables. And I think we're going to provide a Zoom option for people who can't make it in person. That's it for that.
Do you want to have any questions? No.
I am, I have one other update. So I sent everybody, everybody. An email last week, last Tuesday, and it had some information about open May training. If you haven't completed that yet, please attend the training and just. Send me the certificate by next planning commission meeting, which is May fifteenth. By May fifteenth. Okay. Thank you.
Write that down. Well, oh, let's see here. Public comments, item number six. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission?
I have none.
Um. Seven, item seven. Is there any unfinished business from the last meeting?
No.
Agenda number eight. A report on any new businesses. You have to, do I, do you want me to itemize each one of, make all these, each one of these out? Or you want to just go ahead and address them? What I want.
Um.
We're going quick, we're going quick. You're doing one by one, one by one. Well, we can talk. So I mean, new business and the public hearings are identical pretty much.
Yes.
Um, as far as a public hearing portion of it goes. Just want to be clear that we were planning to do all of these updates under one hearing and not, because you know, the way it's numbered, it looks like we're having four or five hearings, but it's really just one hearing.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right. All right. So it's a document, this part impact fee, Cody, did you want to address that?
We can just go down the list. We got, we got to move along quick. So. Let's go down this, don't worry about adjusting it.
Well, all right. Well, then, well, let's proceed with the proposal.
Okay. So we're going to kind of act team this because we worked on these code changes as a team. So I'll be presenting a little bit and Marian will present a little bit and I don't know if you've met Chris over or not. He's our civil engineer, so he did some, some work too. And then Chris also did some of the work. So I'm going to be passing it off for the stuff that they worked on. I think the biggest challenge is going to be just because we have all of these different sections of the code to flip back and forth through. But apparently Marion tapped it, so it should make it easier. And the last thing I'll say is, is even though this looks really thick, there are really pretty minor changes in here, but like if we made. Changes to page three of a particular section of code, we've got three sections, three pages in there for one line change.
Right.
So it's not going to be anything super major. So we've got five or six code changes that we're looking at. And the first one I'm going to present and. We talked about this at our workshop a little bit last week, the housing stuff. So. And I guess what I'm going to propose for the staff report, I'm going to actually read the summary for this. And the other staff will do the same for their sections because this gives you the overview of what we're doing. So for this particular code change, it's based on the fact that in twenty twenty one, the Washington Legislature passed House Bill twelve twenty. Which among a lot of other things require cities and counties planning under the Growth Management Act to support or accommodate, I should say. Four types of housing, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, indoor emergency housing and indoor emergency shelters. And these are defined in the definitions of this and I'll, I'll take you there in a minute. It requires that permanent supportive housing and transitional housing be allowed in all zones that allow residential units or hotels. So what I've done here is I've given an example of one of our residential zones. With code language and where I put in, you know, as an allowed use, permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. That's an example of how that will appear in all the residential and commercial zones. I didn't print out every single zoning district we have or we had a packet this thick.
Right.
But this is just to show you that we're putting that in our zones. And so that. Includes R four, R six, R sixteen, and then the commercial business district and the other three commercial zones, C one, C two, C. C three. So that will, the identical change will appear in all eight of those zoning districts. Then for the other types of housing and I guess shelter, it requires that emergency housing and indoor emergency shelters be allowed in any zone that allows hotels. And so that. Obviously eliminates the residential zones, but those would be allowed in the commercial business district, C one, C two, C three. So once again, in our commercial zone. Example, or excerpt that I put in the packet, what I've shown there for emergency shelters. And let's see, I want to get, I keep forgetting them. And indoor emergency housing appears identically in all the commercial zones as an allowed use. So it's basically a one line change to the zoning. Which is, I guess, what I say here, all residential and commercial zones of Yellum have been amended to reflect the requirements. Since the proposed changes are identical for each of them, we're just showing in the attached R four and C one zones where those changes are posed. So. We are required, as I said, to have all of these housing types by state law, but we do have some ability to condition how they're located. So the next thing that I'm proposing, if you could go to chapter eighteen seventy one in your packet. So that's a new chapter that we'll be adding and it's based, it basically establishes the citing criteria for these types of housing. And what we've done is kind of done similar to what we do with. You know, lawn businesses, adult oriented businesses. I mean, this is obviously fundamentally different from that, but. What it does is it establishes standards so that they can't all be located in one area. There are distant standards to locate the different housing types from one another. If you look up at the screen, Savannah just pulled it up. So housing and shelter ties regulated by this chapter shall conform to the standards of the underlying zone as well as the following general standards. So we'll have a pre-submission conference first to six sixty. I think it's down a little. Okay, no, no housing or shelter type shall be located closer than six hundred feet from another identical housing or shelter type. And then there are restrictions on different kinds of uses that it needs to be sheltered from, so the same six hundred sixty foot. I mean, distance requirement. So public and private schools, certified daycare, et cetera. This is not required by state law. It's allowed. Obviously, the city has the. Flexibility to even entirely eliminate that if you want to, but I just wanted to try to anticipate whether or not you would want to have some. Slight amount of control over how the facilities get approved. If you want to discuss that now or if you're comfortable, we can move on. It's up to you.
Could you describe this emergency housing type? I mean, what, what are we talking about here? For homeless people or?
Yeah. So let's, can you go to the definitions, Savannah? It's just a couple of more pages. Right. Yeah, there you go. You're getting that. Yeah, right there. So those are two of the types, and this is a definition taken straight out of the state law. Which we have, are proposing to put in our definitions. And. I'm happy to read it or you can just read it yourself. If you want, we can scroll down to the other ones too, like permanent supportive housing, if you want to see those definitions. We have four new categories that we're adding. Or it's also in your.
I thought that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. So any, any questions on this or, okay.
Any questions?
Excellent. Okay. Well, that really covers, you know, HB twelve twenty. So I think the next one, Chris, would be you. I don't know if you want to just sit here or?
I'll go down up here that we have not shouting at you from. Good evening, commissioners. What we're looking at is clarifying and distinguishing special event standards and temporary use. The root definition in here is that temporary uses would take place on a private property where a special event would take place on the city owned property. So chapter eighteen forty one, temporary uses have been amended to provide more clarity on the standards for conducting or maintaining a temporary use on private property. Chapter eighteen twelve, ministerial review is being amended to include temporary uses as requiring a ministerial review. Last minor change to section eighteen sixty two forty has made to clarify the sign requirements for temporary uses. A good example of a temporary use would be a parking lot sale that a business is holding. You know, this kind of regulates how often they can have those sales, how often they can have the extra signage, banners, balloons, all the things that come with an event like that. In addition, a new chapter is going to be added to title five, Business Licenses and Regulations, to clarify the requirements for conducting special events on city property. This new chapter replaces and augments standards for special events that were previously included in temporary uses. The truth being that special events weren't clearly defined. It was just a small section in our sign code. So expanding this. It just makes it a lot clearer as anyone applying, it also makes it a lot clearer if anyone reviewing what's being proposed. It just puts it in two columns that are much more tangible and intelligible to everyone involved.
What are the penalties for non-compliance with so many things? I mean, they vary according to.
It's kind of a case by case basis, but basically what we would do is we would go out with a notice of violation and say, hey, you had the sidewalk sale. You haven't spoke to the city. You know, you put yourself and us in danger if there was an accident out here. This hasn't been reviewed. This proposal went on illegally and it can't happen in the future. If it does, you know, we could find them. We could terminate their right to have special events on this property or, I'm sorry, temporary uses on this property.
Because I would think a lot of, you know, like. People wouldn't really go into looking at the codes and do it, they go and do something. And so you just got to give them a warning.
Exactly. Our goal is conformance, not punishment, people to comply. And a lot of the frequent flyers we see are book sales, tent sales. Things that people hold several times a year. So some of the new businesses that come to Yellum might be. Quite, you know. Understanding of what's being asked of them, just going out there once and saying, hey, if you're going to have an event like this, this is what you have to go through. This is the type of review. They're usually on board. Most people want to do it that way.
Sure.
Curiosity, and you might think of adding this, is car shows. Currently, they are doing car shows at the theater. Once a month, they're considering doing cruise-ins and next to Burger King every Tuesday night. Now, those are not fun drives, but you know, cars are driving there and parking to show their cars. I don't know if that would be something to identify because again, you're, you're attracting people to look at the cars. The cars are parked there. We cover things such as race walks, rallies, items like that, but these are stationary. You and I belong to Prairie Street Rod. We're running a car show in conjunction with the home show, which I'm assuming the home show is. Providing the insurance for the car show, but maybe they didn't mention there's a car show too. And then you get like the veterans of foreign wars, you get churches. Some of the churches will do it. Well, the Catholic Church does a full-blown car show in their parking lot every year. As part of a fun drive for. Coats for kids, but that's bringing in charging and putting the car shows. It might be advisable just to put also in there car shows or something like that as a requirement because I would think. For the Catholic Church running that car show. They might need a special use permit for that because the cars are pulling in off of Yellum Avenue and pulling out. So that might be something to address or consider because this is becoming a very popular fun drive for churches. Nonprofit organizations and they're using their own parking lot. But the traffic is going in, so I don't know what the answer is. Just throwing it out to see what. The impact would be.
That is a very good idea. And again, you know, where it's taking place is a big factor. If it's on city property, it would be a special event. If it's on private property, it would be a temporary use.
Right.
But you are correct, that traffic has to be mitigated and thought out.
I'm thinking there may be a requirement for a temporary use permit if the Catholic Church is going to do that. Or if the high school, another high school also. I think the. They do at least two car shows a year where they're bringing in traffic for the high school. And that might be something where you might consider a temporary use permit.
That's a fantastic idea. And the other thing, we want to review these things for emergency vehicle access. You know, if they're blocking off entrances or exits and there's a medical emergency, a fire, want to make sure that those people can get the assistance they need. And all the rules are being followed. So I think that's a great idea and that's something that we'll take back to the office and discuss.
So, well, I guess I would ask, because I think, if you don't mind me bumping in here, but you could. You know, take a vote on. Whether if you want to approve what we have so far, just take a vote to amend it to also include as a separate item car shows.
All right, I'm not sure how to proceed with that.
Well, I mean. When we get to the hearing part.
Okay.
A motion could be made, something along the lines of move to approve the proposed staff changes to the titles five and eighteen. Subject to amending temporary use chapter to include car shows as a separate line item. Something like that. I just want to make sure that we, you know, if we can take care of it tonight rather than back again, so.
I agree with Gary. We don't have to rebuild the whole process. We can just add that. And special event does cover a lot of what you're talking about. Temporary use doesn't. So I mean, just adding something to temporary use that reflects your concern. Keep us moving forward.
I mean, I even right here, this is temporary use number five, we could rent circuses, car rentals, rodeos, car shows. Fairs or, you know, it could be that simple.
Okay. I know we don't really have a lot of them right now or have anything that cities involved in, but. There are some people who put it this out, who are really interested in the. Giant yard sale, you know, it seems like Martin. You know, has, and it brings tons of people, you know, to the area. That just means a ton of temporary permits. You know, because you'd have them at all the businesses and.
So you're thinking of something like Packwood does.
Packwood, yeah.
So it would be a single event that would blanket all those booths as opposed to having, you know, fifty different permits for, for the guy who's selling fondue and the guy who's selling raps, the guy who's selling art. It would be a blanket of.
And a typical average garage sale would be sound. Want to give the argument.
And assume the million dollar liabilities on city property. So if they were holding it on church property, unless the church wanted liability for a car show or a swap meet or something, that would not be the city's responsibility. Is that correct?
Some private property would be their liability. So that kind of, with John's proposal, would it take place on city property or is it something they would want to do on a private lot?
Well, I mean, the majority of it's still in the private. I don't know if there would be any city involvement, you know, unless they wanted to do something to work.
Anyone else have any questions?
I wanted to add something regarding the car show. So there is a section, which is section eight in temporary use section. Which talks about users found why the side panel view committee to be similar in nature and impacts to those listed temporary uses. So the side panel view committee is going to review all of these proposals. And if there is like an exception, like a car show, which is similar to the fair, we can consider that and give.
Yeah, I, I think the reason that I'm saying put it in there because they decide to have a car show and they look at the reg and say, car shows aren't in here, so we don't have to worry. So you find out after the fact that there's a hundred and fifty cars coming through the town. And driving up and filling up all the parking lot in Walmart or something. And you'd say, well, you didn't get, no, we checked. There was nothing here that said car shows, so we didn't bother to look by specifying it. That just that change. At least you'd have teeth if you go contact them and say, how come you don't have a permit? You said, it's not required. I don't have anything here that says that. It's becoming such a. Every weekend, there is probably seven car shows within twenty miles of Yellum. They're everywhere. They're on every corner. There, every church is doing it. And it's just become a huge. Fun drive type thing. And I would think by putting the word car show in there, at least they can't argue that, well, we. I'm sorry, you should have had a temporary permit for this. That's the only reason I would recommend, and that may be just a word change. We're not changing. Any use, but. And maybe if you don't feel it's necessary, I just see it as. Because until I read this, I didn't even think we needed to worry about it. Only run a car show. It's no big deal. As long as we're not on city property. We can bring in, we try to get a hundred to a hundred and fifty cars. So that's the number of cars coming in and then people are going to be coming to look at all those cars. And we also usually have vendors and we put, they're selling things at the car show too. And so. It becomes a huge muddy thing if.
I think we could take that back to the office and that's something.
There's something to look at.
And like Gary's saying.
Without it, but I.
Yeah, like Gary was saying, they still move forward in this process, you know, like you said, it's a couple of words that we're going to add. That's really.
Very simple.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Chris?
All right, okay. Thank you so much.
So then we proceed on to. Item number four, new business, which is updating the fats and oils and greases. Chapter.
Actually, no, we have one before that, Commissioner, number three.
Remove it. Oh, I see that number.
Yeah, Marian is going to be presenting on that.
Very well.
Um, so Mr. Chair, members of the board. Sarah Williams, our assistant planner, actually put together this section of the code. I'm just going to present what she put together. We basically made some modifications to make this section of the code about mixed use developments more user friendly. As the way it is right now, we have regulations from mixed use developments in few chapters. So what we are proposing to do is to remove that from C one, C two, C three, and just have them all in one section would be, which would be section eighteen. Sixty four point zero forty, which is the mixed use development section in the code. This makes it more user friendly for applicants, clients to just find this in the code instead of just telling them, go to this chapter and then this chapter. So that's one of the changes we've made. In addition, there were some definitions added to the definition section of the code about mixed use and multifamily. Another item that was basically. Was considered was flexibility, has been added to the mixed use development by reducing the percentage of. A mixed use development that must be devoted to commercial from thirty three point three percent to twenty. So what we are proposing right now is that at least twenty percent of the combined growth floor area of the building. A building's proposed on the site shall be devoted to residential users. And at least twenty percent to non-residential users. This means that they, they can. Pick either or. If they want to do twenty percent residential and eighty percent commercial, they can do it. If they want to do eighty percent residential and twenty percent, they can do it. Some regulations, we already talked about it in previous meetings we had last year. Such as at least thirty percent of the commercial component must be constructed prior to completion of the residential component, which we added those. We just moved it from other chapters and put it here. And. Another section that was, it's existing, which is a residential component of the mixed use development shall be. Composed of multifamily units, which means that they can't have single family, like in the back and then in front have. Commercial. And density standards, we made some changes to it. We are improving our mixed use, like development regulations, like slowly. And we noticed that having thirty two dwelling units per acre period, like that's what the existing density requirement in C one, C two and C three is. It literally says like, if you want to have mixed use developments, you have to have thirty two dwelling units per acre period. And now like we are proposing to add a minimum, which is minimum density of sixteen dwelling units per acre. Period. And now like we are proposing to add a minimum, which is, um, uh, minimum density of sixteen dwelling units per acre. And that would be on C one, C two and C three. Um, CBD, we discussed it in the past. Uh, I think it was, um, October meeting, we, uh, decided to. Um, have minimum of twenty dwelling units up to maximum of, um, thirty-two dwelling units per acre. And these are only for mixed use developments. Uh, it means that like they have to have like, uh, well, uh, components. And, uh. Oh, the other thing that I forgot to mention, um. Basically, uh, another thing that we added was that these amendments also, uh, clarify, uh, that drive-through facilities and, um. Automobile service stations are not allowed as part of mixed use development. That's something that might be added, um, um, recently as well. I mean, we're proposing to add. Um, and that's about it. Any questions? Comments?
Maybe I missed, but what would, what would be the standards before this?
So as the way it is right now, uh, in C one, C two and C three, it's thirty-two dwelling units per acre. And now we are, uh, proposing to have a minimum as well. So minimum to sixteen and maximum of thirty-two dwelling units per acre. Just to make it more, um, developer friendly. Sometimes it doesn't work like in some areas because because they have like smaller lots, you know. It doesn't work the way, um, we wanted to. So. And still it has to be multi-family. It can't be like, um, single family.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mary. Sorry, now we're going to the next one.
Hey, well, this one, uh, is a proposed change that Riza has made. So I'm gonna ask Riza to. Tell you what we're up to. It's a totally different chapter. It's not related to.
Even that's page, um, in your. Like at the last thing.
Yeah, for everyone. Uh, so the thing that I made, uh, is in chapter thirteen oh nine for fats. Oil and grease, which is, uh, short for F O R G. So, uh, the only, uh, it's not a big change. So the only definition is changed. Uh, in order to have more clear and more comprehensive, uh. Uh, definition for F O R G, you know, F O R G requirements. And, uh, the other things, uh, that I, uh, I propose to, uh, change is, uh. Or for to be consistent, so the. Public directors or directors is, uh, used interchangeably. Uh, but the director is defined, uh, previously in other chapters. So. What I propose is that you use director, uh, all through this chapter, so to be consistent. The third change that I propose is if you scroll down. A little more. You can scroll down.
In the.
Your lines, uh, slow move and find it. Anyway, uh, um, so the other change that I would, uh. That I propose to change is, uh, uh, the definition of, uh. We go all the way off.
Well.
Yeah. I don't know why it's not. Okay, um, yeah, yeah. Hold it, scroll down a little bit. Sorry. So here, uh, so, so here, uh, the, the second, the, the, the second line that is, uh. It's further through is, is redundant and I. Uh, propose to just combine two, uh, sentences and have a more, uh, clear, uh. A requirement for the record keeping. So there isn't any major changes.
So what about the people that already have establishments? Do they have to now comply with these new?
So the, this requirement is not the new requirements. Uh, so the, uh, the definition doesn't change the, the people that needs to be, uh, used this, uh, chapter. Or required to have a F O R G program. And, uh, the requirements are gonna be the same. And the only difference is, uh. Uh, it's gonna be more clear and more comprehensive. So when I say more comprehensive before that, we have, uh. So we have very specific, um, businesses named here. For example, you said that the churches need to be here. Uh, the hospitals or any, uh, business that has the kitchen inside and serve people. But here, what I propose is that instead of, uh. The specified businesses, which we may, uh, miss one or two. We, we, we can use a definition of food establishment. Which is more comprehensive. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, we also add the one more thing that, uh, the businesses that just serve or sell the packed food. It's they don't, they don't cook in the kitchen. They don't wash the dishes in the kitchen. They can, they can just, uh, uh. Not have F O R G program because they don't add the F O R G to the system. So which it wasn't, uh. In this chapter before. It wasn't clear in this chapter before.
Questions? All right, well, thank you.
You got one little sheet for me on the back there. It'll be, if you don't have it on your sheet, it's just, it's separate. It's like a loose, loose, loose sheet. There you go. So, um, council adopted a resolution, um, several months ago that allowed the obtaining a park impact fees. Um, we had to go through an ordinance process to make that official. So we're bringing it to you guys because it never went through planning commission. Uh, it was mentioned by Ann during a meeting about a. With parks advisory board talked about it, but it never went through planning commission. So we're now bringing it to you guys to kind of show you, um, how park impact fees are assessed. And then at the bottom, you'll see what the proposed numbers are. Council already approved, approved a resolution adopting these, but we need to go through an ordinance process in order to officially adopt these. These would apply to new development only. Um, the one thing we don't have in Yelm that a lot of other cities do is a park impact fees. When you build a new house. Or a brand new development or a new apartment, you pay that residence you're now creating, pay a park impact fee. Yelm doesn't have that. This would establish that and allow us to. Supplement our municipal building fund to build more parks. We are severely underparked. Um, I believe the last check we were about fifty-six acres of more park space we need for our residents. And the only way to obtain that is through the general fund right now. This would allow us to actually have a fund that'd be set up for capital projects in our park comp plan.
When does it become, uh, law or? Something that they're, they're, well, on.
Yeah. So what the idea would be taken to you guys is just letting you know about it, letting the public know. I'll take it the council's an ordinance. They would approve that ordinance and it would be official that we could start assessing on effective date. Yeah.
Well, this is a fee to pay upfront when you apply for building permit. Uh, is that gonna also? Uh, remodeling permits, the difference?
This is new construction. New construction. So similar to like a system development charge for water. If you build a new house, you have to pay. X amount of money for a water connection. You would pay a park impact fee for a new house. But you wouldn't, it wouldn't take over remodel or anything like that unless you're building new dwelling units.
Or, and it's further away than. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? You're welcome. You want it. Public hearings. I am now going to. Open the hearing. It was, um. Monday, the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And I'm opening the planning commission public hearing at four thirty-nine. And today's hearing is on the proposed code amendments. Do I have anyone's here that wants to address that? Against. Here it is. Thank you staff for the report. I wouldn't have to say that. I will now open the floor for, while I already did that. So there's no one here that's, uh, willing to speak to it. You all know for the comments. Any questions or comments from the? I'm closing the hearing at forty-nine and thirty seconds. All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see here, let's go on. Subcommittee reports.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um. You're gonna need to take a vote on whether to recommend approval of these to go to the council.
Before we go on to the next panel?
And I guess I would say the recommenda- the recommendation, because in my recommendation, I failed to include title eighteen, but I would say that we are recommending. The commission approve the proposed staff changes to titles five, eight and thirteen of the. Development code with any amendments that you may want to recommend.
All right. I have something to say. You have a question?
No, I just got a made a motion.
Well, as I said, our motion, then we would add the consideration for the car show. Included.
Reimanded.
In the amendment, yeah, that would be what I would make.
There will, uh, I am not sure that I can repeat all that you just said.
So, so our recommendation is that the commission, um, approve. The, uh, proposed code changes to titles five, eight and thirteen. And on municipal code. And then obviously with any amendments you may want to suggest. So I, so what's the exception of amending, um. Chapter title, what chapter is that?
Eighteen forty-one, we're gonna add car shows that take place on private property. Yes. And then five thirty-seven, perhaps adding something for car shows that would take place on city property.
Very well. Gary, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I make that motion.
I apologize and.
Well, that's a mouthful and I, you know, okay, uh, in the future, we'll draft up the proposed, um. Motion.
Okay, thank you. That, that.
You need a second?
Yeah, I need a second. Do I hear a second?
Second. Richard's second. Second.
All right, you have a second. All those in favor, uh. Approved by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Hearing none, we approve the changes.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to subcommittee reports. Don, you have any? Please.
We have our Arbor Day celebration coming up on Friday, April twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
That'll be eleven o'clock at the Yelm Community Center. Um, we have a choir and a band both performing the presentation of the flag colors. We have hundreds of these sappings we'll be giving away as well as the Arbor Day art contest. Um, after the Arbor Day celebration, the art will be on display at the, um. Yelm Library until June first. Well, all of you are invited. Please feel free to come and show your support and.
Wow, yeah. What's the date on that again?
That's gonna be Friday, April twenty-eighth at eleven AM.
Eleven AM, all right. Very well. Any other subcommittee reports? Why are you voting to adjourn?
Move we adjourn?
All those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, the date was for, uh, home show. Yeah, Friday is the twenty-eighth, really forty-one.